Start again. Right, start again. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City Council's Planning and Highways Committee. I am councillor Peter Price, member for Shaggy and Brightside, and I'll be chair in this meeting. Before we go through the housekeeping, I'll just go down members to introduce themselves. Gary?
Chair, good afternoon, everybody. I am councillor Gerda Weatherhoff from Shaggy and Brightside.
Bob?
Councillor Bob McCallum of Baton Ward.
Chris?
Councillor Chris Rosling-Joseph of Baton Ward.
Diane?
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Diane Hurst. I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
Aye.
Good afternoon. My name's Mike Chaplin. I'm a councillor for Southie Ward.
I don't think you were on, but anyway. Is that better? That's better.
I'm Mike Chaplin. I'm a councillor for Southie Ward.
Andrew?
Good afternoon. Andrew Sangha, councillor for Forward Ward.
Over to the other side. Roger?
Good afternoon. My name's Roger Davidson, and I'm councillor for Ecclesfield.
Q. Brian? Tony?
Councillor Tony Damons, councillor for Southie Ward.
Hello, I'm councillor Peter Garbutt for Netheredge and Sharrow Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm Mal Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield.
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Williams, councillor for Stanleyston Ward.
We're back on. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the... Oh, sorry, we'll just get the housekeeping arrangements for Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Housekeeping. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have on exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request for everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast, and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Have we any apologies?
Yes, Chair, we do. We have councillors Zahira Nas.
Okay. Item three, exclusion of public and press. There are no items being suggested, so can we move on to item four? Any declarations of interest that members would like wish to make? No, that's all right. Minutes of the previous meeting, item five. They're on... Not pages on here, but... Are people happy to accept them as a two-record?
Three.
Okay, thank you.
Chair?
Sorry.
So could I just draw your attention to the fact that we have got a substituting for councillor Nas today? I believe councillor Chaplin is here.
Good point, well made. Welcome, Mike.
Apologies, I should have declared that earlier.
Item six is site visits. Suggested follow the usual outcome on the Monday if required before meeting. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item seven, then, is the application of the various act regulations. For the first time in my life, we're now down to one actual consideration. The other two have been withdrawn. So it's the one on Peniston Road. When I find it down, I think. The car centre on Peniston Road, Grenace Side, S35, and it's application number 20/00414, and it's a full application. Over to the other person.
Thank you, Chair. Can we move the slides along, please? Again. Thank you. Okay. The site is located at the eastern side of Peniston Road, just to the north of the junction with Wheel Lane and Saltbox Lane. Next slide, please. The site's in a designated housing area, and it's surrounded on all sides by housing, except for the church which sits in the grounds to the south, as you can see on the aerial shot there. And it's currently occupied by a used car sales and vehicle repair and maintenance business. Next slide, please. This is a view of the site from Grenfolds Road, with the church in the foreground to the left. This photograph is taken slightly further north on Grenfolds Road with the bungalow at number seven in view on the right, and the existing building on site in the background. And here's another view from Grenfolds Road with number seven to the left, the bungalow in the foreground. At the gable end of number nine, Grenfolds Road, just in view to the right, and the existing building in the background, partially obscured there by the existing tree screen. This is a view of the southern site boundary, taken from Peniston Road. The grassed area there forms part of the church grounds. This is a wider view of the site from the south. Next slide, please. A view of the site taken from the north-west, looking at the Peniston Road frontage. That's a view towards the northern site boundary. You can see properties on the left of the screen are the properties on Rogean Road to the north of the site. And these are photographs of development on the western side of Peniston Road, and includes the three-storey apartments located to the Saltbox Lane junction, that's on the left of the screen. And then on the right of the screen, you can see properties opposite the application site, which are elevated above the highway because the land generally rises as you move to the west. Thank you. This is the existing site plan, with properties on Grenfolds Road to the east of the redline boundary there, Rogean Road to the north, Peniston Road to the west, and again, you can see the church to the south. Thank you. This is the proposed site plan, with the proposed building located towards the rear of the site, as per previous approvals. You can see forecourt parking and servicing areas to the left of the footprint. There are separate vehicle entrance and exit points. There's additional resident parking and garden on the lower level to the east of the building footprint. And the areas, you can just about make them out highlighted in red, are, as described in the committee report, those elements that were removed in order to reduce the impact of the development on those properties to the east, including a three-storey wing of accommodation on the south side and a one-metre setback from the rear boundary, which resulted in the loss of 12 apartments. So it went from 32 down to 20 apartments. At the bottom of the screen there is a plan of the lower ground floor apartments. And then above that are the three-ground floor commercial units, the largest of which is limited to use as a convenience store. The two smaller units are limited to use as shops, financial or professional services, medical services or offices. Thank you. These are the first and second floor apartments, again with the shaded areas indicating those elements that were removed from the scheme. Thank you. In this slide, we have the front and rear elevations of the building, with three stories to the front at the top of the screen and four stories to the rear. It's proposed to finish the building in reconstituted stone with ashlar detailing. Oh, actually, if you just go back on, sorry, you probably can't make it out there, but the rear elevation at the bottom of the screen, yeah, you might just be able to make out the obscure glazing in the apartments on the left-hand side of that elevation, the upper-level apartments, which is designed to minimise overlooking of the bungalow at number seven's Grenfolds Road. And again, those red areas, those red shaded areas, are those areas that were omitted from the scheme in order to reduce the building's bulk and its overbearing impacts. Thank you. Here we have north and south side elevations. They show the fallen land across the site, and there's about a story level difference at the rear of the site. And you can also make out, the red areas are the bits that have been removed, but on that rear elevation, you can just about make out the lowered pitch of the mansard roof to the rear, just again to remove the bulk of the building to the rear and give it a more roof-like appearance on that top floor. And the final slide, please, thank you. That's a similar cross-section showing the mansard roof and showing the tree screen at the rear site boundary. Thank you. If I can draw members' attention, please, to the supplementary report. We have one deleted condition. Condition 32 was a repeat of condition 31. They were both relating to external lighting, and so condition 32 can be deleted. We have an amended condition, condition nine. It's very slight changes to the wording of the highway improvements, essentially seeking the same thing, which is the provision of a pedestrian crossing across Peniston Road subject to further investigations, including a formal road safety audit and a review of traffic regulation orders. Then there was a correction, just to point out, in the report. The end of the first paragraph on page 49 said that the main and primary habitable room windows of the bungalow at number seven Grenfolds Road face north, east and west, and they don't. It should have said north, east and south. And then finally, we received one additional representation since we published the agenda, and that was received from the occupant of a neighbouring house. They'd already made representations on a number of occasions. Most of their comments had been addressed, and this latest representation was referring to the grant of consent for 73 houses in Parsons Cross and appeared to raise concerns about excessive levels of construction in the area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Diane. Questions? Sorry. Jump the gun. We've got two speakers. Can I just explain that these are late requests, and I normally don't allow this, but being as there's only one application on the agenda, I thought I'd be a bit kind and let them speak today. I haven't got your names, so if you announce yourself, if you keep it fairly short, please, and we'll give you time just to make the points on behalf of your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for the late notice that we would be here today. As a Grenace Side resident of over 50 years, as a parish councillor for over 20 years, and city councillor for West Ecclesfield for over nine years, I know the area well and the residents in Grenace Side. This site has been the subject of numerous planning applications over the last 15 years, the first submitted in 2006. There are positive gains for the local community of Grenace Side with this application. I and some of the residents look in favour of a proposed crossing, the three charging points for electric vehicles, and a local store-stores combined, hopefully with affordable housing. They're the positives. I wish to thank, at this stage, the planning officers and the highways officers for their comprehensive and detailed planning report of some 41 pages. Very comprehensive and very detailed. But I thank them, Chair. However, I and local residents still have serious concerns in regard, in particular, to the massing size and height of the proposed development of four stories, some five stories higher than the housing on Grenfolds Road. Previous applications have got a pitched roof. To reduce the current height of this application, it's been turned into a flat roof. I'm not sure whether at this day and age that flat roofs are acceptable, we should be going for pitched roofs. The proposed massing has been reduced with the previously planned of 32 houses, units reduced to 20. And this has been, as resulted, taking the wing away, and the height is reduced because of the flat roofs. Car parking. That's the question. Will the 20 housing units be allowed parking spaces? And what provision has been made for visitors to these housing units? Has there been any provision? The A61 has heavy traffic. I know you were there yesterday, but especially between sort of seven o'clock and nine o'clock, and three o'clock and six o'clock, the A61 is the extremely busy road. It's a main arterial road out of Sheffield towards the north. I noticed the pictures that you've shown, there were no cars on the A61. I don't know when you took those, but it must have been a Sunday morning, early morning somewhere around seven o'clock. I've never known cars not be on that particular stretch of road. Concerns are still there over the cars and the delivery vehicles entering and leaving the site, mainly when they're performing a right turn. So, and as regards the crossing, it would be good if it was a light controlled crossing in conjunction with the traffic lights at Wheel Lane, Saltbox Lane, A61 Road, that it's in conjunction with them, which would ease the road traffic flow. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Chair.
Thank you. Would you like to follow on? Five minutes more.
Thank you, Chair. My name is councillor John Branrig, current chairman of Ecclesfield Parish Council and here on behalf of the Planning Committee at Parish. So these words and points are not my own personally, but those of the Planning Committee. The big concern, other than those that councillor Hooper have mentioned, is the amount of commercial traffic there may be. This site is very wide, but very slim from front to back. And once the construction's happened, the big question would be relating to anything of a large-sized vehicle, possibly articulated, making deliveries. Also, the point of street parking off the A61 on Saltbox Lane and, sorry, Rogean Road. Other than that, the amount of parking space apparently allocated is 39. If 20 of those 39 are for the residents only, that leaves 19 for commercial traffic. Nevertheless, it would seem to be enough, but then again, the site is very narrow. I question the manoeuvrability space for those vehicles. And finally, the lack of privacy, especially to the residents on the east side of the proposed construction, is also of a big concern to Parish, as having been raised by several residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Chair.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just pick up on a couple of those things. I think most of those points are addressed in the committee's report, but I will just come back on a few. Yes, we have granted a three-storey building before with a pitched roof. There's nothing, we don't have anything sort of in policy to, any reason to resist a flat-roofed building. I mean, they can be very efficient, it does keep the height down. We did actually amend the roof, so from the rear, it looks more like a mansard roof, so it sort of reduces the bulk slightly. The flat roof could be useful, and the applicant's already indicated that they may make use of that roof to put on an array of photovoltaic cells on. So I think in design terms, we felt that, you know, it keeps the height down, it keeps the mass down. Removing the wing from the side reduced the mass, and we were quite happy that, in the context of such a large, wide site, that the massing was comfortable and actually will be relatively similar in height to properties on the other side of Peniston Road, because they are elevated. Car parking, you're quite right, there are 20 for residents, so one for each of the apartments, five for visitors and 17 for the stores. That's slightly below the council's maximum car parking guidelines, so that's acceptable. If there's an over-provision of parking, there's a danger that you're attracting more cars. And the idea is very much that this is a facility, in terms of the convenience stores and the two smaller shops, this is a facility for local people. They should be able to walk there on foot, you know, with the help of the provision of the pedestrian crossing. I'll leave Mark to come back perhaps on manoeuvring round the site and deliveries. In terms of privacy to the rear, we have 27 metres between the rear elevation and most of the properties on Grenfolds Road. The relationship with the bungalow is slightly different. I wonder whether we could go back to the site plan, please? Keep going to the... Yep, that one. The bungalow is the property to the, in the south-eastern corner of the development there. As explained in the report, that, the... It's an unusual layout, that site, obviously built later, I think, than the other properties in Grenfolds Road. It is closer. Its rear elevation sort of faces towards the wing that's now been removed from the development. But actually, most of its habitable room windows and primary windows face north, east and south, so they don't face towards the development. And its main garden area, although it does have a sort of small terrace at the rear, its main garden area is to the north, and there is a tree screen, and there is obscure glazing, the windows closest to that property. So we're quite happy that there will be some impact, but we feel that the impact following those changes will be acceptable. I think that's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Members' questions?
Excuse me, Chair. I thought the planning officer had invited Mark to comment on some of the highways issues that the objectors raised.
Yeah, Mark, sorry.
Chair. Yeah. In terms of servicing manoeuvring, the tracking shows that most stores, convenience stores of this size, tend to be serviced from the large rigid vehicles, 10.5 metre-long rigid vehicles. And the tracking that we've seen shows that this can be accommodated within the site to the bottom end of the commercial building that you can see there. I think historically, from my side, this is down the years, when it was a car dealership, quite often car transporters actually parked in the road with cars being taken off the back, actually in the live highway. So I'd suggest that's probably an improvement. The actual car parking spaces there and the iron widths are all standard dimensions. So even though it's a long, slim site, the actual dimensions are standard dimensions. We're quite comfortable with the manoeuvring.
Thank you. Right, questions? Gary?
Yeah, Chair. I should be supporting this, Chair, because it's just what Mark says, it's one of my bits about HGVs parking up the car transporters. This is only going to be class two lorries, what's going into empty bins and delivered to shop. And also on the car parking, I think what's needed there is that it's just a fast turnover, and it's going to be a shop, so people's going to go in there 10 minutes and back out with the stuff. And the three positives, Chair, for this is shops for local people, as I said already, that people's going to walk there. The crossing is very, you know, it's needed. You know, we've got, it's took us 10 years, but the reservation's in the centre of the road at the crossroad, so that's, you know, so this is a massive step forward for us. And fundamentally, Chair, the main thing is the affordable homes, Chair. So I should be supporting this, Chair. Thanks. That's a comment, won't it?
Q. Andrew Sangha?
Thanks, Chair. Just interested in understanding the amended condition. Clearly, this is condition nine. Clearly, the paragraph drops make it slightly easier to read, but I'm just a little concerned, I mean, partly picking up Gary's point about what we're actually agreeing in terms of the pedestrian crossing, because the wording has changed, but I'm more concerned by the fact that the provision of anti-skid carriageway servicing has been deleted, as has the review and improvement where necessary of the system or street lighting vicinity. Those struck me as things that were good in the original condition. Why have we lost them? Thanks, Chair.
Just remind people we're on questions. But, Tony?
Sorry, Chair, that was a question. That was a question. Why has there been this amended condition? Why is the newer, why is the new condition nine different to the original condition nine?
I think the condition has been changed in its wording as a consequence of the planning consultant not wanting an overly worded condition. I think the suggestion is that it would be a crossing in addition to all necessary measures. And within the detailed design, there will be a design of which the road safety audit will be part of. There'll be quite a lot of speed checks undertaken to determine which is the most appropriate form of crossing. But it will, it will be to the correct standards.
Tony Damons?
Yeah, I was with Andy. I was waiting for the answer to his question, so I wasn't quite quick enough, Chair. I like this scheme. I go past this plot of land quite regularly, but the only thing that's giving me a problem is the crossing, because it is an incredibly fast road. People, even though there's a speed camera not far away, people tend to speed up. So would it be possible, if the committee was minded to agree, to have a light control crossing there, to specify that?
I think the conditioning, I mean, it would be possible, but the condition is in word in such a way that we have to undertake the necessary assessment before it not all guide us towards the most appropriate form of crossing. We do, we have, we have speed cameras on approach on both sides, further down the hill and just out of town. And then you also have the traffic light cross the, you know, four-way junction, you know, not too many metres away. So, and we have the new sort of parking refuges to the side of, on the western side of Peniston Road as well. So actually, perhaps, you know, traffic at that point isn't moving too quickly, although it does in sort of nearby lengths of Peniston Road. But the type of crossing, we felt it's difficult at this point to identify which type of crossing would be necessary. But the applicant and the agent have agreed to providing an appropriate crossing, subject to the assessment.
So thanks for that, but I can't help but think what might be appropriate to the developer might not be appropriate to us or the residents.
I think it will be the outcome of the assessment, rather than what they choose to provide, that will be the key, the key point.
Thanks. Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you, Chair. I've got four questions. I think all of them are going to be fairly straightforward. We've heard that there's some concern about the type of roof. Can you tell me what types of roof there are in buildings nearby? And is this in any way out of kilter with that? The second is to do with cycling provision. I understand there is to be some provision of cycle rucks. Can you tell me what type of cycle rucks and how many there are? On the visit yesterday, we saw at the back that for about half the length of the back, there is a quite effective tree screen. Can you confirm that that will be continued by some new planting? And fourthly, the planting along the front, which at the moment is taken with some iron railings? Is that planting going to be, what, can you tell me about what sort of planting it is? Is it going to be low, high? You know, what sort of planting is it, basically?
Okay. Done?
Thank you, Chair. Just double-checking some of the condition numbers. Trying to find the cycling one. At the moment, we've got 10 long-stay, 10 short-stay cycle parking. So we've got a secure store at the rear of the site for residents, and then short-stay parking at the front of the convenience stores for visitors, for users of the shops. Oh, sorry, I missed the question. In terms of the roof, there is a mix. I mean, this is the A sixty-one, sort of on the way into the city centre. Grennyside Village itself is slightly sort of to the north-west, where, you know, an area where there's perhaps of more character, conservation area. The character here is more mixed, it's not a conservation area. We don't have policies sort of requiring a specific style of roof. Just development that should be in sort of in keeping with the character of the area. And actually, the flat roof in this case keeps the scale of the development down and, you know, could be made use of in terms of the photovoltaic array that I referred to earlier. As you travel down the A sixty-one, the variety of building types, you know, sort of increases, you know, you've got sort of further shops, convenience stores and other buildings as you drive south. There is a tree screen, we've got condition nineteen, which requires details of any new, well, of all boundary treatments. The trees are indicated as being retained on the site plan, we would hope to retain most of those. And there is additional planting proposed and condition seventeen secures the landscape details. So there's an indication of planting along the site frontage, there's obviously an indication of tree planting around the amenity area to the, on the east of the site, but those details are yet to be agreed in terms of plant varieties and types of trees. I would suggest that the planting along the front of the site, certainly close to the entrances, will need to be relatively low, no more than a metre in height, because we wouldn't want it to interfere with visibility, you know, as you leave the site.
Thank you, councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair, a couple of questions. Firstly, coming back to the screening, can we suggest, recommend that the screening is a full twelve-month screening? Because I noticed yesterday that there was very little screening at that bottom end near the bungalow, because obviously leaves fall off at this time of year, so that would be quite important. Secondly, looking at that picture up there, at the bottom of it by the red writing, there is a hashed area, which I can't, I can just about see, is that meant to be the delivery area for the, yeah, so that would be a designated delivery area? Great, thank you. That's it, thanks.
Councillor Holmes, Chair? Do you want to come back and say, keep cutting it out, won't you?
Thank you Chair. We can, I mean, as I said, the details of the landscape scheme and the boundary treatments are all conditioned and to be agreed. We could certainly add an informative that suggests, they look at varieties of planting that will give, you know, year-round coverage. And yes, I can confirm, if nobody did hear, that that hashed area at the southern end of the screen is the service base. So vehicles will come in at the north of the site, they'll come down, they'll reverse into that spot and then they'll be able to leave the site in a forward gear.
Councillor Holmes?
Yes, I wanted to ask, I put my hand up right at the beginning, I wanted to ask this right at the beginning, because it was relevant to the order of what we do. It's in connection with the speakers we've got in today and, so I've no problem with the speakers being in here, but we, in the past, what we have done is remove the speakers from the room when we get into the body of the argument. And I just wanted some consistency there in either keeping the speakers in or not, and could we have a ruling on that, please? I do have another question.
Ask the legal advisor?
Thank you. Obviously, previously when we were in the reception room, objectors would go back to the public gallery. My understanding is that since we've moved into this room and obviously been subject to the various coronavirus related regulations, we've just been having to keep social distancing. My understanding here that the desks are set out in a social distancing compliant manner in that case. I don't think there's a need for the objectors to leave the room on that basis, in that they would normally, in reception room days, just be part of the public, still in the room. Thank you.
Just to add to that, in the past, they just sat behind us, I think there was no legal reason why they had to leave, just other people came in after them. Okay, right, your question?
Yes, thank you. I find it very hard to visualise the projected building because of where it lies in the landscape. So I did do quite a long site visit on Sunday, as it happens. So I wanted to ask why there are no 3D visualisations, because that would make a big difference in understanding where it lies in the landscape.
Thank you Chair. Yes, they do help, but it's not a sort of local planning application requirement. It's an additional sort of helpful aid, visual aid, that applicants sometimes provide on request. But they don't have to provide them and, you know, but they have provided sections and elevations, you know, long sections, so we can see the changes in level and the relationship with the adjoining properties.
Okay. Gary, did you want to come back? You've had major observation, I want to ask a question.
I know, did it wrong way around, Chair, I do apologise for that, but thank you for reading me back in. Being a Grennysider for nearly thirty years and that side of town, it's very important to us, because like I said, it took us ten years from the other development to get those reserves in the middle of the road on there. So I just want to go back, and a few people's touched on this, about the light system. I know what Di said and I understand what Mark said, but I just wonder if, can we have a ruling on it? I know they've got to go out and do the tests and one thing or another, if they're to come back and say it's got to be a zebra, it's got to be a zebra. But can't we, as a planning board, because we are passing this application, have a condition that we feel that we, you know, that it's a light system we would prefer?
Chair, the previously, well, there's been a couple of previously approved schemes on this site and the highway improvement condition did actually stipulate lights and push button control. And all of the modelling that was undertaken during those assessments showed that we were happy with free flow traffic conditions on down, you know, they weren't made any worse by the provision of these lights. But that was with the agreement of the applicant at the time, he thought, that they thought that lights would help promote walking to their store. The applicant in this instance will provide lights if the test for a zebra crossing fails. And it's simple, it's a black and white test, if the zebra crossing is inappropriate in this location, according to the regulations, then it'll end up being a traffic light push button control. That's where we're at at the moment, and what the committee want to do is up to the committee, but as officers, that's how we've dealt with the situation.
I'm not quite happy, Chair, because, you know, I'm looking at the legal person now, I heard from, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mark, but you're saying about, you know, the person before said yesterday that because he helped their footfall. What I'm saying is that this application's coming out today and I would like us to rule on lights. I know, I've heard from planning, I've heard from highways, I just want to hear from legal.
Ask the officer to respond.
Thank you Chair. As I've said quite a few times in terms of conditions, there are six tests that conditions need to make. And one of them here, which I think is the most relevant, is whether the condition is necessary. And here you've got your planning and highways officer telling you that they're not currently aware of what is necessary, because these tests have not been carried out and these tests need to be carried out in order to discover what type of crossing is necessary. So I think that's the position in respect of those tests. But obviously, if that isn't a position that members are happy with and they consider that a light control crossing is necessary despite not having the outcomes of those tests available to them, then of course that is something that you can consider and somebody could put forward a motion that be seconded and vote on amending that condition. But as I say, we do need to meet those tests in respect of it being necessary and that would be the concern there.
Come on, we're coming up now, Tony?
I think that was quite helpful. If we agreed to agree this application with the provision that the proper test will be taken and if it's necessary, it's a light controlled crossing. As I said, there are times on this road when it's not very busy, but when it's busy, it's busy. And I just think, you know, if the developer's happy with it, then I think there's no reason for not doing it. But like what you're saying about the tests.
Councillor Davidson?
Thank you Chair. Could you tell me whether the surface that is now present will be in any way changed? And will there be a more permeable, permeable, permeable surface built? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, the site will have to be completely re-landscaped, including the surfacing, to provide an appropriate quality of parking finish and, you know, pedestrian approaches, et cetera. But the details will be submitted as part of condition seventeen, which is the landscape condition for hard and soft landscaping.
I've got a question for Mark, yeah, I'll ask him to speak directly into the microphone if he would, please. Loris turning right out of that particular site, how are they going to cope? And what, you know, there could be problems with other cars, can you tell me how they would cope? I mean, it would be made easier if there were a level, sorry, a pedestrian crossing that did have lights, because obviously they would have to stop at some point. And there are lights a little bit further down the road, I know, which does cause vacancies in the road for getting out. But have you thought about the problems that could be with lorries in particular, turning right out of that particular site?
Chair, yeah, I think partially you've answered that question for me. I think the lights to the south are in the order of seventy to eighty metres away and they do create platoons in the traffic when salt box to wheel lane is running and the north-south isn't running. It does create gaps and I think even during the peak periods, I think that a delivery vehicle, a commercial vehicle might have to wait a little while for the lights to change. But there are plenty of priority junctions up and down the A sixty-one. When I say priority, just estate roads with give way markings where traffic turns left and right. It's a busy road, but when it's safe to proceed, you proceed.
Q. Councillor Ken?
Thank you Chair. Just on the crossing thing. The recent changes to the highway code, which have effectively, in how you read them, given car plans to any pedestrians to cross the road any time they want, you know, it depends how you read them. I think they're a very badly drawn up set of regulations, but how will that affect any decision as to what type of crossing you can have?
Yeah, I've seen some of those regulations and particularly into cycling as well. I can't quite answer that as it stands at the moment. As I say, it'll be a bit of a team effort in terms of deciding the best way forward with the type of crossing. There's the legislation and the new legislation will be taken into account within the road safety audit that is undertaken. The road safety audit doesn't just look at legislation, it looks at human behaviour as well. And that'll be a big part of whether a zebra crossing is appropriate or not. Some of the comments that have been made about how busy it is during the peak periods and will a zebra crossing give enough priority to pedestrians? That will be part of the decision-making process in terms of zebra crossing versus push button crossing. But yeah, the legislation as it is today will be applied to that decision-making process.
Williamson?
Thank you Chair. If I can refer to slide seven, which is a picture of, it's an actual photograph, that's it. Am I right, if I'm reading this correctly, the new application will have two more stories on top of that white building, albeit the top story will be slightly recessed because of the roof, is that right?
Yes, that's right. That's a two-storey building, but that building currently on site sits closer to the rear boundary than the proposed building will. And I'm not quite sure of the exact height of the existing building. Sometimes residential stories are slightly lower than commercial stories. But essentially, it will be three stories with a mansard roof, with accommodation in the mansard roof to the rear, set further back.
That's questions done. Does anybody want to put any additional, nobody signaled they're going to move anything? Anyway, observations if that's going to come in. Councillor Hurst?
Thank you Chair. I actually quite like this scheme. I think it gives a reasonable contribution towards the housing provision in the area. And it's an eminently sustainable position with a convenience store which allows amenity to the properties round it. I can see, I mean, my cousin used to live in this area and I can see it being quite popular with people who want to downsize and move out of family homes. So with the conditions that we've got in place, I look forward to seeing the development go through. Thank you.
Councillor Sango?
Thanks Chair, I shall be supporting the scheme. I do think it's a big thanks to officers in terms of the way they've worked with the developer, in terms of reducing it from thirty-two flats to twenty, I think that's a significant improvement. And I think the work to reduce the impact on the bungalow at seven Grenfolds Road. So I think that's a big positive. I mean, the crossing has been needed on that bit of Peniston Road irrespective of the development. So I'm a big supporter of having a crossing and I noticed previous schemes have had a crossing. So I hope that when the scheme is developed and when the necessary audit is done, that the appropriate crossing is put in place, although personally, I would prefer a button crossing, but I accept the advice on that point. But yes, yes Chair, I think this is, you know, a sort of site that we need to redevelop and this is a reasonable mix of housing, but also a local convenience store. And the final point would be the local convenience store, in my opinion, will increase the need for the crossing. So all in all, I think this is a positive, positive application. Thanks Chair.
Councillor Williams? Oh, sorry. Councillor Woodcock?
I don't see any reason for turning this down on planning. I have concerns about the height at the back, so because of that, I will be abstaining in. I can't really make my mind up, so I will be abstaining in.
Okay, anybody else? Councillor Holmes?
Thank you. I think this has got some great pluses, this scheme. Particularly that local people are going to be allowed access to good quality affordable housing in the right place at the right time. But I also feel that the character of rural villagers need to be respected in and around the city. Housing provision is a chronic problem in this country and Sheffield is no different for anywhere else. However, I think it should be possible, as the Grennyside Conservation Society say, to build houses that fit the character of the village. And these houses are not buildings that fit the character of the village. There is no pitched roof, the massing and the size is out of scale. It's on quite a prominent, close to corner location and I think it needs to be of exemplary quality of design, which I do not think it is, so I will not be voting for this application. Thank you.
Ask Williams?
Thank you Chair.
Sorry, I know you're going to say we need a reason, but...
Thank you Chair. There's been a mention just now about affordable housing and I'd just like if the planning officer could come in and just clarify the position in respect of affordable housing, please.
Thank you. It will be, I mean, I don't think it's described as such in the Kiddmaitre Report, it'll be affordable because it will be apartments, one and two-bedroom apartments. So I guess in relation to the existing housing stock in the area, it will be more affordable. In terms of the actual affordable housing contribution, there won't be any, because they've been through the viability process and actually, the scheme is not viable to produce it. So it's affordable in nature in such as it will be cheaper than the existing housing, family housing stock that surrounds it. family housing stock that surrounds it.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just looking at slide 18, I noticed that you've got three offset windows on the left-hand side on the third floor up from the ground. A, are they obscure glass? B, are they openable? Because they actually ironically push the view at the most vulnerable enabled part, which is that bungalow.
Yes, sorry, I probably didn't explain it particularly well earlier. The three oriel windows, the panes of glass or the windows, openings that face the bungalow will be, are the obscure glazed openings. And it's the, the glazing on the other side with the longer views, they'll be the clear glazed openings.
Councillor Tony. I thought you got your hand up.
Sorry, Peter, nodded off again. I like the scheme and I've sort of listening to it throughout. I think it's, will be welcome in the area eventually. But it's, it's the crossing that's giving me a problem. If we had all the tests and various things done, it could come out that because of the way they come out, we must have a light control crossing. But it might come out that we could have one if we wanted, you know, it's not asking too much. So I'd like to include that we would prefer or whatever a light control crossing.
Can we do that? I mean, I must agree. I mean, it's madness, our families crossing that road at busy times without, without the assistance of light. But anyway, just tell us where we stand on it.
Bearing in mind the six tests that Vicky referred to earlier, I wonder whether members would be happy with an informative attached to the condition that advises the applicant that members would be keen to see a push-button crossing as the preferred solution.
I'd be happy with that, Chair.
Take it that's got general approval, it ain't what people said. I'd be happy with that, with that taken of all. Yeah, that's okay. Any other questions or some observations? Are we ready to vote with that additional wording? Okay? I'll work, okay, work around then. Councillor Weatherall?
For, Chair.
McCann?
For, Chair.
Rosling-Joseph?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Dan Hurst?
For, Chair.
Councillor Chaplin?
For, Chair.
Councillor Sangor?
For, Chair.
Davidson.
For, Chair.
Councillor Garbutt? Sorry, councillor Holmes.
Against, Chair.
Mr Dams?
For with the addition of those words.
Councillor Garbutt?
For, Chair.
Woodcock?
Abstain.
Abstain. And Camp?
For, Chair.
And councillor? Four. That's pretty overwhelming. Can you just remember, if you vote against, you must have a planning reason for doing it, it's not good because you don't like it. And it's already been approved once, but you know, just a... So can we, it has now been carried, what was it, 11-1 or something? 10-4, 1 against and 1 abstention. Okay, that's the finish of the planning applications. We've got one more item on the agenda, which I think is councillor eight, when I find it, which is the appeals. Anything to comment on?
Thank you, Chair. There's nothing to highlight. They were all appeals against delegated decisions. They were all dismissed, bar one, which was allowed, which was in relation to a front porch and sort of local character issues. So, so other than that, nothing to report. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, item nine, due to next meeting, first of March. You can get in your diaries at 2pm. Thank you all for your attendance.